October 13th, Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. Roll call, Carla Disjardins, present. Lindsay Jocelyn. John Meyer. John Meyer, I think I see you here.
Here.
Thank you. Jared Fournier.
Present.
Kathy Mistemaker Harris.
Here.
Thank you. Sean Peterson.
Here.
Raz Chivik.
Here.
Bill Martel. Staff, Ryan Bray.
Here.
Sonya Chapman.
Here.
Mary Ann Shinati.
Here.
Okay, thank you. So I will appoint Jared Fournier for Lindsay Jocelyn. And Public Hearing, Z 2020 1825, Continuation of Ecos Energy LLC. Rodney Galton requesting a special permit to construct a 1 megawatt ground mounted solar facility on property located on Plainfield Pike, Plainfield, map 17, block 36, lot 37, industrial zoning district. So this was continued from last month because we had the outstanding issue of the verification of the ever-source capacity. So members, if you look in your packet, you should see that documentation from ever-source, verifying the capacity is sufficient for the project as proposed. Did the applicant have anything else to add regarding that?
I did not. If there's any questions, you know, obviously I can try to answer those, but I have no additional information to add as far as the ever-source study that they did in this area.
Okay. And this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience with a comment or question on this application, now is your opportunity. Okay, hearing none. Are there any other comments or questions from commission members?
All good.
Okay, any comments or questions from staff?
No.
I have no comments or questions. My comments are all in the staff report along with a list of suggested conditions of approval, should you choose to approve it.
Okay. All right. So hearing no other comments from the public, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I do, you know, I do have one question. Ronnie, did you guys go over the agreement?
Which agreement?
The decommissioning agreement.
Yeah, I sent an email back to you a couple of days after you sent that to me. Saying that we had, we had no issues. It basically mirrored the, the previous agreement that we had in place, the decommissioning.
Okay. All right, sounds good. Then we'll just go with the one that, that we presented.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this app? Okay, I'll entertain a motion on the public hearing.
Make a motion to close public hearing.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I had a second by Jared. All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, public hearing is closed. Moving on to item B, Z 2020 1832, Continuation of Riley Rice, Riley Landscaping LLC, requesting a planned development district of residential and commercial for property located at 1271 Norwich Road, Plainfield, map 5, block 4, lot 45, RA 60 zoning district. Now, Ryan, is this application complete?
For the most part, yes.
And what are the items that are missing?
One second here. We received the narrative today, which is also in your packet. So we don't have hours of operation proposed. So we do need those. So.
And is the applicant on the call?
Paul Archer should be here.
I am here. And Ryan, right up in here are the hours.
Oh, you put them in the notes?
Yeah, see him right here on the plan?
That's top.
And if you could mute if you're not addressing the committee right now? We're getting some feedback in the back there.
I'm having, I'm having a lot of trouble hearing you.
Paul, where are the hours of operation? Oh, there it is, right there. I'll zoom in on it. So Monday 7 to 7, Tuesday 7 to 7, all the way through to Saturday. Sunday by appointment. It was proposed. So I did have a couple of comments after this plan was revised. If you see over in this area, there, there is a row, two rows of either arbor body or white pine. They should be extended all the way over to the fence line over here so that the mulch storage area back here is screened. There was a note earlier that there are construction vehicles, unregistered vehicles back in this area. I have been informed that they are either all removed or are almost in the process of being completely removed. And then we're also waiting on DOT approval, which we do not have yet, but that could be a condition of approval that we receive DOT approval before any permits are issued.
Now, the DOT approval is for a change of use?
Yes, so anytime you have a driveway on a state road and there is a change of use, currently the use approved is an existing house. So now they want to add a commercial aspect to it. DOT must take and approve that commercial aspect, which I don't see any problems with that. It's a very long straight road there. There's no sightline issues, but they still must give their, their approval.
Paul, can you give the summary of the proposal, please?
I can't hear a word. I cannot hear a word anybody is saying.
Are you able to give a summary of the plan?
Perhaps you should call in.
Carla, I have no idea what you said.
Carla, would you like me to run through the narrative?
Please.
Okay. All right, so the narrative. What they're looking to do here is, in this area over here, this is an existing garage. They want to use this for contractor storage. So right here, this addition, I'll zoom in a little bit. So this addition right here, the, the property owner is looking to put on, this will be his workshop area, his garage area for storing vehicles and equipment and working on them. This is a concrete pad back here for working on vehicles outdoors. These are all individual stalls here that he was looking to rent out to contractors. They would rent the space, they would park their vehicles and equipment here, which is badly needed in town because you are not allowed to park commercial vehicles on residential property. So if you're a, a small home occupation type contractor, you need someplace to park your, your vehicles and equipment. In this area over here, the, the property owner has a landscaping business and he wants to be able to store some mulch. So they are proposing to widen this area over here so that there's a 25-foot aisle width that will be a dust-free surface, chip seal or asphalt millings, which should work just fine. This is currently a driveway coming in and I did not feel comfortable with having a commercial driveway coming in off of Topper. So there's going to be a gate here, fencing here, fencing here. All traffic for this area will be coming in off Route 12. This lot over here, this was part of the lot, they actually just broke this off and this will be a house lot for the, the property owner. It was a free split. So we, six units in this area. No combustible material will be stored in the building. No vehicles or materials will be stored outside of the building except for materials stored in the bulk storage area, which is back here. I already mentioned there's a gate that's going to be installed here. The dumpster is proposed to be enclosed. This is a dumpster pad. And that should be just about it. Just, we have to extend this tree line over to this fence.
So from what you said about the free split, Ryan, that driveway that is on Topper will no longer service the proposed lot?
That is correct. It will be gated off and it will be just used as a driveway for this lot when the house is constructed. And also the, the property owner can access through this way if he wishes.
Okay.
And the house is going, the house is going to remain as a house.
So this is a public hearing. So if there's anyone on the call with a comment or question regarding this application, if you could just state your name and your comment for the record? Any comments or questions from commission members?
What looks odd to me is the fact you got an existing well in the middle of a concrete pad where they work on vehicles. Do you have to worry about contamination with the well?
Paul, were you able to hear that, Paul?
He said he couldn't hear anything.
All right. I don't know if that is a raised well, I would say, I would say no. If it's a raised drill well, there shouldn't be any issues there. If it's a dug well, that would be a concern, but that would be the property owner's concern.
Ryan, can we get Paul on audio via phone call so that he can answer these questions?
Let me try calling. Also, when there are phone number, you can call off of Zoom instead. You, you can hear me.
We can hear both of you, so. So if you could relay that question about the well, Ryan?
Okay, so the, this well over here is not used by the house. It is only used for this building, so the, the house well is over here. So they are not concerned, they're not concerned about any contamination.
Any other questions from commission members on the application?
I'm still here.
Well, even if, even if it did leak in there, there was a problem with that, it's still going to contaminate the groundwater, isn't it? Yeah, so they're not going to drink that water, whatever, but you still tend to chance of contaminating all the wells in the area.
Did you hear that, Paul?
No, what'd you say?
The question is, if any contaminants were to leak down into that well, it would contaminate the groundwater.
Then make it a condition that we abandon the well. If you want the concrete bad, you have to abandon that well.
Was the commission able to hear that?
Yeah.
So they would cap off the well essentially?
Yes. A, a well running company would have to go in there and, and fill the well with concrete, I believe.
Okay.
If you want it to be a repair site, then you would have to abandon the well.
Okay.
Even if you change the configurations to the pads, so it's away from the well a little bit, I'd be fine with that.
Did you get that, Paul?
Yeah, I can ask him if he wants to do that. Or, or if you put the cover over the top of it. I mean, we can certainly, most of the well caps you put on now are watertight anyways. So we could certainly work on making it a watertight well seal on top, anything.
Just put a concrete tile around it?
Yes. Yep.
How does the commission feel about that?
I'd rather see it abandoned.
I agree with John.
They can always run a second line from the existing well, too.
Correct. Well.
If, if he hadn't put that he was going to be doing repairs back there, I wouldn't have been concerned with it, but the fact that he stated that there'd be vehicle repairs back there.
Concrete, he's working on his own vehicle. It's not, it's not a commercial repair facility. It would be just like you put in your car back there, you know, changing the spark plugs or change, you know, changing a belt or sharpening the blades and stuff like that. That's what it's used for. Right now, he does it back there now and he does it on the gravel ground, on the, you know, the dirt ground. So he's just looking for a place, a concrete pad in order to do some repairs on his equipment. Nothing more than that. It's not going to be a commercial repair facility. It's just maintenance on his landscaping material.
It doesn't really matter whose material he's worked, whose equipment he's working on. Accidents still happen. It could be my car, me working on my car, my driveway, if my well's on top of it, stupid.
Correct. But I, I still think if it's, if it's a driven well, the whole cap on it is watertight anyway, that we could put a concrete cover and sweep it around it.
I would prefer the, the pad be adjusted to be away from the well slightly or cap the well permanently. Close it off.
I could run that by him and find out what you'd like.
So we, just so the commission knows that because of the, the extensions allowed for COVID-19, we are not in danger of running out of time. So we do have time to continue this next month if you so choose.
I think some clarity is needed and the definitive answer from the applicant. So the house that's on the property, the existing house, will remain a residential use?
Correct.
Correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And the access to the residential property, is that going to come through the commercial driveway? Or will they be using the existing chip sealed driveway back there?
They will be using the, the residential is going to be the first off of Route 12. Everybody will use that driveway. The only driveway that's going to be used, well, for the, is the free split, is going to use the existing driveway off of Topper Road.
Okay. Ryan, can you just shift the map, um, just so we can see that corner? So pull it over to the left, the other way, sorry. The other way.
Okay.
To the left.
There. That's what I was looking for, the Norwich Road entrance. Okay.
So this is existing, this is how the site is accessed? Hang on a second. Paul has a second meeting going on.
Gotcha.
So, yeah, everything currently enters this way. So this is a second access that will be sealed off. So everybody using this site will be coming in off of Route 12 over here.
Okay. All right, yeah, I couldn't see that part, so that. All right. Any other comments or questions from the public or board members regarding this application?
I have one question, Art Gagny.
Yep.
This is split residential, commercial use. Is there a defined line where that's split?
No, there is not. This is a, a planned development district, which allows for multiple uses, residential and commercial and industrial, so if need be.
Okay.
All right. So from the comments of the commission members, it appears we may want to continue this to get the clarity on the, whether it'll be an abandoned well or not. If there's no other comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion on the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to continue public hearing until next month.
Motion by Sean. Second by Raz. All in favor of continuing?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, public hearing is continued to our next regularly scheduled meeting. Moving on to item C, Z 2020 1884 of Scott Gardner, requesting a special permit to construct a 26 by 40 detached two-car garage on property located at 407 Starkweather Road, Plainfield, map 16, block 54A, lot 9, RA 60 zoning district. Is the applicant on the call?
Yes. Hi, Carla, I'm here.
Okay. If you could please just give a summary of your application, please.
Okay, pretty straightforward. It's just a detached garage that we plan to build on our property. About, you know, give or take 40 feet away from the existing house. The dimensions of the garage are 26 feet wide, 40 feet long. It's two-story, second story is just a storage area. There you go. And that's pretty much it. Other than a half bath, that's going to be on the, in the garage area. The workshop in the back.
And what will the access to the storage area be?
There'll be a flight of stairs to it.
If you can take a look at the screen.
Yeah, access to the back stair. I'm sorry, I should specify that, yes.
It's, it's built in an embankment. So on the low side, you have the garage doors. On the second story, you can see it's only about six or seven foot run or six or seven foot height difference. And so the stairs will be right here.
And that's for storage only?
Correct.
Do the garage doors space the house?
Yes, they do. Roughly, it's a little bit of an angle, but yeah.
Okay, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who has a comment or question regarding this application? Any comments or questions from board members? Any additional comments from staff?
No additional comments.
Okay. Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion on the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close by Raz.
I'll second.
Second by Sean. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Public hearing is closed. Moving on to item D, Z 2020 1886 of Ellis Sage and Jeff Bellevance, requesting a two-lot re-subdivision for construction of two single-family houses on property located on Mortimer Road, Musup, map 30, block 109, lot 23, RA 60 zoning district. Is there someone on the call to speak for the applicant?
I could try again. Can you hear me?
Yep.
What, what we are is here, where is Ellis Sage and Jeff, Mr. Bellevance is a, a two-lot sub, it's a re-subdivision. It's a shared driveway coming off of Mortimer Road. It's going to have two lots in it. It consists of 70 acres. So the, basically the two lots are going to be 35 acres apiece. We have Health Department approval. And it's a very, very simple. We've got wetlands approval, we're not within the wetlands area. So we have, we didn't even need a wetland. So then, as you can see, it's just basically a 50-foot access strip coming. Five acres apiece.
So this is a blow-up of, of the plan. So this will be the house to the left. And. This will be the other one. So it's, it's pretty simple. 35, 36 acres apiece. Very large lots. Everything is outside of the open review area. I have no issues with it. It meets all of our regulations.
So it's a shared driveway, Ryan, with the 50-foot right-of-way?
Yep, shared driveway going down to Mortimer Road. Mortimer Road is down here. So existing.
So it's a 50-foot access strip?
Yes.
So they own the strip?
Yes, they do.
Okay. So this is a public hearing. If there's anyone on the call with a comment or question about this application, if you could state your name and your comment for the record? Any comments or questions from board members?
I see it's a two-deeded right-of-way over the property in favor of others. What's the, what is this all about?
This lot right here owns the right-of-way. So the right-of-way is deeded to this one. So the property is owned by this lot over here and this lot has right to access.
Okay, it's not somebody, a third party then? Because it says by others here, so I was unsure if it meant a third party or one of the owners.
Sorry, did I miss something?
Yeah, Paul, the question is, who has the right to use this right-of-way?
That's not the question.
And. It would be owned by lot 20, it would be used by, it would, which right-of-way are you talking about, Ryan?
Well, coming off the road. So who actually owns the right-of-way?
Lots will have rights to it.
Right.
23 will own it. 23-1-1. What's that?
No, go ahead.
I'm missing a question. Lot 23 will own.
All right.
Paul's breaking up. Have rights over it.
Yeah, so Paul's breaking up. So lot 23, which is this lot over here, will own this property. 23-1 will have right to access, the pass and repass to get to the lot.
Okay. Can we have that noted more clearly on the plan?
Did you hear that, Paul? Paul, you there?
What was the question?
Could we get that noted a little more clearly? Who owns the property and who has a right to the property? That was the question.
Absolutely, Ryan. I think, I think right now, if you look at the. I dropped off the maps for you today. If you look at the bound, the subdivision map, it specifically shows it. You're looking at the site development plan. Look, if you can turn up the boundary survey, you will see that it's, it's explicit.
Which one's the boundary?
Can you get the boundary, the subdivision map, Paul? Excuse me?
Which one?
So it would be probably the third page.
Right here?
To the subdivision page.
That is a subdivision. Give me one second, I'm trying to call him. Give me one second, I'm trying to call him. Okay, so you're on speaker.
Yep.
Why don't you mute your, why don't you mute your page? Well, I'll mute it for you.
What do you?
All right, so I just muted you. So we have the subdivision up right now. This is the subdivision plan. Can you hear me? You there now? All right, hold on, I'll put you on speaker. All right, you're on speaker now.
Yeah, that's not the plans I gave you today, Ryan.
It's not. Okay.
Has this been a revision?
We'll show you that, that's defined with dimensions on it.
Okay, I don't have it scanned in right now.
Can you open up the rolling set right in front of you?
Yep.
Mary Ann Chinati, could I ask clarification of Roz? Roz, the, the, um, two rights of way that you were talking about?
Yes.
Um, are those, the, the overall parcel, when you read the deed to the parcel as it exists now, there's two rights of way in favor of others in that deed. So I just, is that what you're talking about? Or are you talking about the access right-of-way for, if the resub is approved?
Yes, that's what I'm talking about. I don't understand. It was a third party of others, it said. So I didn't understand what others were referring to.
Yeah, the, well, the, the current deed does not specify others or which properties those rights of way are in favor of it. It gives names of people, but it doesn't give properties. And it also, there's nothing showing the location of those rights of way.
And just to clarify, the applicant submitted revised plans today that staff has not had the opportunity to review?
No, I didn't review them.
Ryan, are you there?
I'm here.
So what were the changes to the plans that were submitted today?
All right, here it is. Paul, did you hear that question?
Yes. Yes, basically the question, one of the, nothing major was added. We did notice, we did note that there was a note missing. From the, from that, that right-of-way that's there. So we put a note on this there that shows who owns the right-of-way, who had rights to it, and that it was a right-of-way and a utility easement. And it was just a bunch of, a couple little clerical things. But that was the major thing that was changed, that was added to the plan.
Okay, so I don't know if you can see that, but the note is right here. Says proposed access and utility easement in favor of lot 23-1.
The 23-1 is the only other lot that has right-of-way?
Paul, 23-1 is the only lot that has the right-of-way?
That's correct.
Correct.
That is absolutely correct. Those are the only two that are going to have rights over that. Ryan, if you could shut down this.
Yeah, you got the
Shut down what?
You guys got the page up on a thing and I can't do it.
Sorry. Well, I was, oh, okay. Ryan, did you give us the new copies today or the old, or the old ones? Um, I gave you the old ones. I didn't realize that that was that change made. Because the one I'm looking at says there's an easement in favor of proposed lot 23.1. Right. So I thought the only update was that he added 26, which was not included. And I didn't realize that there was, that there was an addition on the new plan, so I did not scan them in.
Carla, can, can we go forward with this, even though we don't have the complete, correct plans at this time?
Well, doesn't this have to come back?
It's up to the board. We can continue this to next month to get clarification on that and make sure that we have that level of review done.
We do have complete plans. I just want to scan it in and put online, that's all.
We don't have complete plans. We're the ones that are making decisions on this.
Can I ask a question of the applicant's representative? Mary Ann Chinati?
Yep, go ahead.
Paul, in the deed for the property as it sits now, that deed specifies that there's two rights of way in favor of others. And I didn't see those rights of way shown on the plan. So I don't know, how would those, A, where are they? And B, would they impact one or both of the lots?
Mary Ann, can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay, yes.
I don't have a copy, but there is, there is another right-of-way on the plan, but they, what it is, they don't own the right-of-way. There is a, a right-of-way that this lot has coming off of Musup. Frontage.
Okay, but that's one, that's one right-of-way. The deed lists there's two existing rights of way.
That's correct. There is the, the right-of-way that comes off of Mortimer. One that comes off of Mortimer is we have owners. One that comes off of Musup, we do not have owners. We just have the rights to pass over.
Hey, Ryan, can you mute Paul's Zoom portion if you're going to use him on speakerphone? We're getting terrible echoes here.
Ryan's scanning the map right now.
But I'm correct that the second right-of-way is not shown on the map that we received?
That should have been, it should have been shown, Carla, on your boundary.
No, it's not that. It's, it's on his end.
Are you pulling that up now, Ryan?
I am.
Can I ask another question? This is Roz.
Yes.
If, this has got to go to the Conservation Commission for review on October 19th. Can't we have this settled and brought it back on November 10th for a regular meeting?
The commission can determine if you want to continue it. Absolutely, you have the ability to continue this public hearing to November.
What, what does it have to go to the Conservation Commission for?
There's a note about open space dedication. Is that a valid note?
I'm sorry? Say that again?
There's a note about open space dedication on the property. It's a staff note, is that valid?
That's my note, Carla. Mary Ann Chinati again. Um, this is the second re-subdivision for this larger parcel, and even though these are creating two rear lots, I thought it appropriate for the Conservation Commission to weigh in on any, um, open space proposal or suggestion or to review and comment on it for the commission.
So this is not a free cut because it has been subdivided previously, correct?
It's been subdiv, it's, it's had a free cut, it's been subdivided, and it's been re-subdivided. This is the second resub.
So then it would be an open space or a fee in lieu of? Is that right?
Open spa, well, fee in lieu of is, you can only, um, the town can only accept fee in lieu of if it's proposed and offered by the applicant. The town cannot require fee in lieu of. So if indeed the Conservation Commission believes open space would be appropriate for this particular subdivision, they'd indicate where they'd like to see it. Um, and then that would come back to the commission for a determination.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
So Ryan, could you point out the note on here?
Uh, yes. So the note, we, this is the easement right-of-way for utility easement. Well, it's, it's clearly shown right here that the property is owned by lot 23. And I might have to grab a different sheet in order to show that. Give me one second.
This is Art.
Yep, Art, go ahead.
Are you still taking questions from the public?
Yep, it's still public hearing. The floor is open.
Does, does this property go out as far as Lake Street at all, but Lake Street anywhere?
Give me one second. No.
That's my only question.
I don't, I don't believe so. It does not. But it does abut open space all the way to the rear.
Somebody said that there's a butts open space to the rear. Whereabouts is that?
Okay, so, well, this will be the rear of the property. These are all house lots over here. So Mortimer, Mortimer Road runs this way. This will be Lake Street over here. And town of Plainfield has property back in this area.
It's off of Charlie Quirky.
Oh, this is off Charlie Quirky, right, the back section. Okay.
That's correct, yes.
And that's open space. This is open space over here. Okay, this is open space over here. I think Mary Ann would recognize that one. Talked about it recently. Mary Ann, do you have any comments on that? Kevin said you might have some information on the open space in this area.
Can you hear me? Ryan, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now. I can't hear you when you're muted. Paul, you are muted.
As far as the open space abutting the parcel that is town-owned open space, that was, it's a 26 plus or minus acre open space lot that was part of the Stonehouse Drive subdivision. And when the Conservation Commission reviews this proposal, if, if, if the Planning Commission continues this application till November, the Conservation Commission will be reviewing it at their meeting on October 19. They may very well decide open space would be appropriate on this particular proposal as well that could then abut the Stonehouse Drive open space.
Mary Ann, I'm assuming that's back here?
Yes. Yes.
Yep.
Yep, town of Plainfield.
Are there any other comments or questions from members of the public?
Yeah, it's Art Gagni again. What, what's Miller Street on the left here?
Miller Street comes in off of Lake Street, it's a little dead end.
Okay, so it abuts Miller Street at the dead end?
Yep. Miller Street ends somewhere in this area, but the town owns up to the stone wall. It's just not, it's not paved.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to continue this till next month.
I have a motion to continue?
Second.
Second by Roz, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Public hearing is continued to our next meeting in November. Item E, Z 2021-887 of Plainfield Materials LLC requesting a special permit for a gravel mining operation on property located at 143-151 Plainfield Pike Road, Plainfield, MAP 17, lot 36, lot 68 and 68A, Industrial 1 zoning district, and MAP 25, block 36, lot 32, Industrial 2 zoning district. Do we have someone speaking for the applicant? Is there a representative for the applicant on the call?
No, we're muted.
Yeah, hi, this is Derek Santini. I am the applicant, but Norm Tebow from Killing the Engineering should be on this call and
I was muted.
Okay.
There he is.
All right, floor is yours, Norm.
My wife would love to have one of those buttons. So, um, I'm sure you're all familiar with the Plainfield Materials operation on, on Plainfield Pike Road. And so what the, the folks from Plainfield Materials purchased the 121.8 acres behind the existing processing facility. And their intention, excuse me, is to, um, utilize materials from this property to support their, um, aggregate operation at, at where they have the, the crushing and screening operation there. So the, the project is broken down into three phases. Phase one being just, just short of 16 acres. Phase two, a little over 23 acres. And phase three, just under 23 acres. There is some overlap on these, on these phases. The, the actual total area of disturbance is, is 54 acres. So if you add up the three numbers So if you add up the three numbers that I gave you previously, you're going to see that they're, they're substantially higher than what the total is, but as these, as these phases move forward, what they're going to be doing is just moving the operation from north to south, working across the property so there will be, you know, the face that they work will be, will be continuing to the south. And as they finish phase one and they restore a portion of it, then they'll, you know, start work on that, on that embankment to, to go into phase two. So therefore, you know, this is why there's, there's a little bit of an overlap and these numbers won't quite add up. If you, if you added up these, these numbers that we have, you see that we're about about maybe 65 acres and so there's about nine acres, nine acres of overlap between the phases. Now, the purpose of doing this is to support their business. Currently, the existing site has been exhausted of any usable material for the operation. So they've actually been importing rock and aggregate materials to process to either crush or to screen or to make earth products for themselves. In that regard, you know, this is literally in their backyard so they can work from their yard and and utilizing materials in that manner. The, the method by which they're going to be excavating it, they will be entering from the Plainfield Materials site, utilizing the existing paved driveway and from the back of the site, constructing an access road and begin working the face going in a southerly direction. As you can see here, this is the eastern half of phase one. The slope, we have three to one slopes all throughout. We're not proposing anything any steeper at this point. All activity is outside of the wetlands and outside of the regulated area. We kept it minimally 100 feet from the wetlands and in a lot of the cases much further from the wetlands as well. The, each phase will be constructed with a stormwater basin. And as these basins would be the first things that are, that are constructed as part of the phase. But I think it should be noted too that the, the way that they're, that the sites are going to be excavated, they would be pretty much self-contained because they'll be doing a downcutting method, working a slope and any, any kind of drainage or water that might come to the site really comes into a bowl-shaped excavation. The basins are all located on the western edges of the, of the excavation. They, the site will be graded at about a 2% to 3% slope across it. We'll have three to one slopes on the, on the perimeter. And the ultimate goal here is ultimately to create a roadway for an industrial park. And, you know, going forward, as, as the supplies are exhausted, that's the approach they're going to take here. We've done something very conceptual here. There certainly isn't a plan that we're looking to have approved, but this is more of a just schematic plan to show you what their thoughts are for going forward. You can see the, the series of stormwater basins that will be located at the western portions of the lot. The first two basins will actually tie into a catch basin on the Plainfield Garage and Storage property. We have a low-level outlet from these basins. So we, we have demonstrated reductions in peak runoff rates for all storms for every phase. So we feel very strongly that the operation will not negatively impact the surrounding properties. As far as the, the amount of material that will be, that they are proposing to remove from here, phase one is about 690,000 cubic yards. Phase two, about 1.3 million cubic yards and phase three, 1.075 million cubic yards. The total, 3.075 million cubic yards over the, over the 54 acres. Obviously, this is a long-term operation. It's not something that's, they're going to be excavating out in two or three years. We do not anticipate that this will result in an increase of truck traffic onto Route 14A. In fact, I think there's, there's a good chance that it needs slightly reduced because what's happening right now is that they have trucks importing material into the site and then after it's processed, exporting material from the site. This will sort of be, you know, everything is going to be able to kept, be kept right on the properties. And they'll be able to work the, the excavation to the south and, and process the materials in their existing yard. Ryan did have a few comments. We are still awaiting a formal review from, from CME Associates and there were a couple of arrangements had been made to get out there and go see the site, but one of them was actually today and and it rained like crazy, so they've actually postponed that. But Ryan's, Ryan's comments are fairly simple. He wanted us to remove the Wetlands Commission's signature block from the plans, which we removed. We also need a surveyor's signature on the plans and I apologize for that because when we submitted the plans, the surveyor was away for the week, so we just wanted to get the other plans in. We do have the signature block there for the surveyor. We will add a note to the plan saying that the conceptual final layout of the relevant buildings are not proposed for approvals as part of this plan. As I said, this is merely conceptual to show you what the site could potentially look like in the future. If we're showing, you know, these, these multiple lots, these 15 or so lots at this point, they could certainly be more, they could be less. It really depends on what types of businesses we're going here. And I, and I think that the applicants are, are going to be very flexible as to, you know, how big the lots are going to be and, and who is in, you know, what size of lot someone's going to get depending upon the potential of this site. The stormwater basins will be incorporated into the final design as well. And if, if any of these individual sites need additional stormwater controls, then there certainly is ample area on all of these sites to provide that. As far as machinery and vehicle storage, Plainfield Materials is going to continue doing what they do right now. It is a store there, their vehicles on, onsite on the Plainfield Materials property where they do the processing. A stockpile will be the same. They'll, they keep their usable stockpiles of material on the site itself. As the excavation progresses, topsoil will be stored in the, in the phase limits of the particular excavation. The plans call for restoration of steep slopes with eight inches of subs soil and a minimum of four inches of topsoil. So we'll get rid of that, some of that unusable subs soil that they can't really use for marketable purposes, but it does provide a nice base for a, for vegetative growth at the end of all operations here. Ryan mentioned about the access. There's no gate shown at the access. If the gate at Plainfield Pike is on the current is to be utilized, that should be noted. That gate will be utilized and we will note that on the plans. They also discussed a performance ENS and restoration bond and that is something that we will prepare and put together for purview. What I would request of the commission is that each phase could be, if, if there is a performance ENS and restoration bond provided, we'd like to do it per phase rather than provide a three-phase restoration bond. So phase one, we would keep that bond and provide it obviously that the applicants restore the site properly. That could be rolled over into the subsequent phase, phase two, phase three, and then either increased or decreased accordingly depending upon what the, what the restoration bond comes out to for each phase. We do have, Ryan forwarded me a couple of letters from neighbors that I'm sure you have copies for, copies of, excuse me. So I'd just like to go through them very quickly here. I'm not going to read them verbatim. But I would like to at least speak about, you know, what the the concerns are of the people who set these letters in. We do have a, a letter from
Excuse me one moment, Norm. Ryan, I don't see the letters included in the packet. Did you provide copies of those to members?
You know, I, I think I forgot those, I'm sorry.
Okay, because would I be correct that if they are written testimony, they should be read into the record?
I can post them on the screen if you'd like.
Yes, please. So I'll read them into the record, Norm, and then any questions that were posed in those letters, I will ask you to address.
Thank you.
Just a warning, we may be cut off at 8:45.
We have a time limit on these meetings?
It was set up for two hours and we're running late to begin with.
It shouldn't cut us off if you have a business account. It should let you run over.
Right, okay. All right, well, let's hope for that.
Well, Mary Ann Chenati again. Carla, I did email members this afternoon those letters as well as a couple of other pieces of correspondence.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I'm just going to read this into the record. Members, this letter is in opposition to the request by Plainfield Materials LLC for gravel mining operations that affect Dow Road Z 2020-1887. The area in question is a very quiet residential area which was already disturbed when Plainfield Materials LLC cleared a road area into the property in question. We never received notice of that clearing, but we heard the noise and saw the dust that it generated. Since we are in a very quiet area, we have multiplied deer, fawns, fox and wild turkeys that frequent our yards. This kind of operation will adversely affect the animals that inhabit this area. Dow Road was not built for large heavy truck traffic. There are no shoulders on either side of this road and we have many young couples walking with their baby carriages on a daily basis. The aforementioned roadway that was previously put in exits onto Dow Road at the worst curve of all of Dow Road. The roadway they put in is in a blind roadway and we have already seen what happens when large trucks tried to enter onto Dow Road from that roadway. The trucks are large, heavy and slow and anyone coming down Dow Road had to stop on that curve to allow the truck time to exit. In the 19-plus years that we have been in our location, we have seen numerous accidents on that sharp curve, people traveling too fast, icy and snowy roads and poor lighting have contributed to the accidents. Now add these large trucks and you're asking for more accidents. There has to be another point of exit for Plainfield Materials LLC that won't adversely affect the homes and families on Dow Road. And that was submitted by Michael and Cheryl Hurley for the record.
Thank you, Carla. This, this, this road that was cut in or utilized was not, was not by Plainfield Materials. It was, it was done, the previous owners had some Susie materials come in here and they took fieldstone from the site. So yes, there were large trucks, they went in there with machinery. They took some fieldstone from the site and they did access, and they did egress on the road in question. This operation does not propose any access or egress for, from Dow Road. I just want to make that clear. That, that access was a, you know, there was a, that was an access to the property for many, many years. In fact, the applicant told me that when he was a kid, they used to ride dirt bikes and four-wheelers down that road. So apparently, San Susie went in there, they, they cleared it a little bit so they could get their larger trucks in there and they took some stone, some fieldstone from the site. But the all-access and egress from this site will be from 14A for this particular operation.
So has the Dow Road access been blocked?
I, I don't know.
Okay. All right.
Will it be blocked?
Yeah, it absolutely could be. I can tell you that the way that this site is going to be excavated, there's really no way that, that could be utilized for, for the way that the site's going to be excavated because the, the way that the, the thinner slopes are, are going to be graded, it will not allow access for any kind of vehicles.
Okay.
If I can just interject as the applicant, I, there is a gate there and it is chained at this point. We have no interest in accessing from down road when we have immediate access from our own, immediate commercial access from our own land. So that's absolutely not in any way our intention.
Okay, thank you. Second letter submission to be read into the record. To the Planning and Zoning Commission, I, along with other residents, received a letter from Plainfield Materials LLC requesting a special permit for a gravel mining operation on property located at 143 151 Plainfield Pike Road. This project affects a residential area known as Colonial Woods, which has 100-plus homes, mine included, and I'm sure other properties not connected to Colonial Woods can be added to the list. The damage that will be done if this permit is approved would certainly not be in the interest of the homeowners, but would have many negative consequences. Let me list just a few that we see doing the most harm. The noise of trucks, dust, raping the land, deforestation of the trees, wetlands involved, flooding because of trees being cut down, air quality, wildlife habitats and value of our homes. Who wants to buy property with a gravel operation as well as other phases that they are presenting in their plans in our backyard? Many of us had to spend lots of money to correct the flooding from the wetlands flooding into our basements. I, for one, don't want to have to address this problem again. What happened to conservation of the land and forest with the town? We are part of the last Green Valley, the stretch of dark night between Boston and Washington DC National Heritage Corridor. If we continue to go down this path of destruction, which it is, it is certainly not fair to us who have been here for years and paying taxes for companies like this to come in and disrupt what we saved and worked for. If anyone on this commission owns property and you were confronted, sorry, lost my place. That's okay. If anyone on this commission owns property and you were confronted with this request, would you be receptive to allow this to happen to you? I think the answer is no. It is my hope that this application would be denied for obvious reasons. Very truly, Ruth and Don and Ronald Pelletier, 151 Colonial Road, Plainfield. Norm, could you look at the page where you can see the Colonial Woods development on that page on the map?
Let me call it up. I think it would be the second half of phase three. It'll show on this one. No, I may not show on this one because it's supposed to.
No, I was thinking it was a page or two back perhaps.
Well, here's where Colonial Drive is, right here.
Okay, so the blue area is wetlands, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Now, I saw a note that you are not within 100 feet of the wetland area, is that correct?
That's correct.
So is that that borderline, is that the 100-foot line there?
Those, those are limits of excavation. You can see the, the Pelletier property is, if you, if you pan, if you pan left a little bit, pan to the, so we can see to the right a little bit further. I believe it's, it's one property removed from the Gwazowski property.
Probably right here.
I believe it's right there. It's not shown on this sheet, but a couple of things. The closest, from, from that property corner to the, to the closest point of excavation is nearly 600 feet. There'll be extensive wetlands, extensive wooded buffer and the excavation is actually going to be at a lower elevation, so there'll be embankments that also protect it as well. I think it's important to note that this is a zoned industrial property. And I understand that people are in a residential property next to an industrial property. We've really tried hard to limit the exposure to any of the abutting neighbors. And in fact, I think the closest abutting neighbor to any of this operation is, is well over 300 feet. So, and that includes, you know, going over wetlands and keeping vegetated buffer between the wetlands and, and the operations. The, with regard to the flooding The, with regard to the flooding, the way that the property drains right now toward that, that wetland between the operations and Colonial Drive, there's approximately fifty-four acres that drain to that area right now. As a result of the, this operation and the way that the site will be grading, we're actually going to be reducing that drainage area to less than thirty-two acres. So there'll be a significant reduction in drainage area to this wetland. So at, at worst, things may remain the same, but my hunch is that I think we're going to improve the situation if people have been experiencing some, some flooding situations in this particular wetland because we are going to be just rerouting some of the water that, that goes to the, to this wetland area, especially the upper reaches of it. So, you know, that in itself, I think, is, you know, works well for the people who, who live there. And I, and I certainly understand that, you know, they don't, they don't want to see this. I mean, they mentioned about wetlands being disturbed. There are no wetlands being disturbed. As far as habitat goes, there are a hundred and twenty-one acres here. We're disturbing fifty-four, so we're gonna leave over seventy acres intact for the site. You know, the, the regulations allow up, up to two-to-one slopes, and we, we avoided that. You can go as close as fifty feet to the property lines. We avoided that. We're staying away from the wetlands. There were a lot of considerations taken here to try and minimize the impacts on surrounding areas.
Okay, and I believe we had one more letter for the record?
You do?
Was there three?
Yes, there was.
Okay. Okay. Committee members, I oppose E two thousand twenty one eight eight seven by Plainfield Materials LLC, request for additional gravel permits. I live in this area and have numerous issues with excessive noise and dust. There have been clouds of dust blowing from this site during hot, dry summer season. The noise issue is very likely above state limits and dust above EPA regulations. Name and address is withheld because of probable harassment from the Kolelo family, family and LLC employees. I was also told the LLC owned and built houses in the media area with the condition they would give up their rights to file complaints on the LLC from concerned citizen.
Well, I don't even want to address the second half of that because.
Well, and what I would say is that if there's excessive noise and dust, that is a separate application than what we're reviewing today. So if the concerned citizen wants to make a noise or dust complaint about the other site, they would do that through Ryan. The current application is not dependent on, so it's separate issue, the noise and dust complaint would be related to the other project, not the one we're reviewing today.
Thank you. I, I mean, I would like to state for the record that a, a, a very conclusive noise study was done by a very qualified individual for that operation at, at a significant cost to, to the owners.
I do remember that submission.
I remember that.
Yeah, I remember that submission.
That all the levels were far below the permitted levels.
Okay. Now, this is a public hearing, so the floor is open to any residents on the call who have a comment or question for this application. If you could state your name and your comment or question. Anyone with a comment or question on this application? Any comments or questions from board members?
This is a special permit, correct?
Correct.
We can pull that permit at any point in time if there's a problem?
If the conditions are not met, then we can have a cease and desist. Now, Ryan, I see the note that engineering has not completed their review.
That is correct. They, they attempted to make it out to the site a couple of times last week and were unable to due to weather. So I believe Norm said Tuesday they're looking to go out to the site.
Okay, so I think it would probably be prudent to wait to have that review before closing the public hearing. In the event there's additional information, modifications, or changes, that would be in the public interest.
Make a motion to continue public hearing until next month.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Sean and a second by John to continue. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Public hearing is continued to our November meeting.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration, everybody.
Thank you. All right, moving to the regular meeting. So I'll call the regular meeting to order. Additions or corrections to the agenda, we have two items to add to new business. Item D, Z two thousand twenty one nine zero seven of Sanger Mono Properties LLC requesting plan development district to approval to add wholesale business, building materials, storage, and sale, manufacturing of construction and building materials from earth, rock, ore, and minerals, manufacturing products from recycled materials, truck terminal, earth excavation, processing and removal on property located at twelve twenty-one and twelve forty-one Norwich Road, assessors map five, block four, lots forty-two and forty-two A. Also, item E, Z two thousand twenty one nine zero eight of K A and G Development LLC requesting a seven-lot subdivision of property located on Sterling Hill Road, assessors map twenty-three, block fifty-eight, lot eleven. I'll entertain a motion to add that under new business.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Roz, second by Sean. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, any abstentions? All right, added under items D and E of new business. Citizens' participation, this is opportunity for the public to address the commission on something that was not part of the public hearings. Okay, hearing and seeing none, moving on to unfinished old business. Z two thousand twenty one eight two five, continuation of EcoSynergy LLC, Rodney Galton requesting special permit to construct a one-megawatt ground-mounted solar facility on property located on Plainfield Pike, Plainfield, map seventeen, block thirty-six, lot thirty-seven, industrial zoning district. Items for discussion among the board members. So staff had made some recommendations in the event of an approval. Conditions. I believe I'm reading the right page.
Just for the record, most of these conditions are basically mirroring what was already approved for phases one and two.
Does this need to go to a public hearing, Carla?
We close the public hearing. This is EcoSynergy?
Yeah, never mind. I lost my mop place.
Okay. So the suggested conditions of approval. The ten thousand dollar E and S bond used for phases one and two will be held over for the remainder of phase two and the entirety of phase three. A lot-line agreement between the applicant and the church is to be recorded in the clerk's office prior to the approval of the zoning permit. Engineering review fees in the amount of six hundred and seven dollars and sixty-nine cents shall be paid prior to the filing of the MyLars. Legal review fees for review of the decommissioning plan are to be paid prior to the filing of the MyLars. Those fees are to be determined and may require more review after commission approval to finalize the agreement. Decommissioning is required at the end of life or at the time where it is decided to cease energy production at the site, including removing all panels, posts, equipment, electric lines, et cetera, from the site, as well as stabilizing any disturbance that occurs during decommissioning as per the submitted decommissioning plan. The commission shall use the agreed escrow agreement language as approved by council that will be included with the file once finalized. Applicant must sign and file on the land records prior to the approval of the zoning permit. The bond of forty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars for decommissioning shall be placed in escrow and must be submitted for the file prior to the approval of the zoning permit. Best management practices for construction shall be used, along with dust control. Any sale or transfer of the real property, which is subject to this special permit, to another entity shall be conditioned upon assigning the decommissioning plan, which is incorporated as a condition of this special permit, made a part hereof, along with all responsibilities contained in said plan. If the real property is sold or transferred to another entity without assigning the obligations of the decommissioning plan, then all obligations contained within the decommissioning plan shall be the responsibility of EcoSynergy or the owner of record of real property until such assignment of the decommissioning plan or such plan is fully implemented. The owner of the real property shall consent to allow access to the real property for the purposes of implementing the decommissioning plan by Ecos or its successor and assigns or upon default by the town of Plainfield or its agents. This condition of approval is integral to the special permit and forms an essential component of the special permit. Failure to implement the decommissioning plan or any obstruction of such implementation by the owner of record of the real property shall be a violation of the special permit and subject to such remedies as may be available by law or equity in addition to the commission's right to draw on the escrow referenced in the decommissioning plan. Approved site plans are to be printed on Mylar film and recorded in the town clerk's office by the applicant after being signed by the Inlands Wetlands Watercourses Commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission chairpersons prior to approval of the zoning permit. So those were the suggested list of conditions from staff. Any other items of discussion for this application? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on the application. Do I have a motion or point of discussion from board members?
I'll make a motion to approve with listed conditions.
As read?
As read.
Okay.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Sean and a second by John. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Application is approved with the conditions as read.
I'd like to thank the commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You too.
All right, item B, continuation of Riley Rice, and that was continued to next month. Item C, Z two thousand twenty one eight eight four of Scott Gardner requesting special permit to construct a twenty-six-by-forty detached two-car garage on property located at four oh seven Starkweather Road, Plainfield map sixteen, block fifty-four A, lot nine, RA sixty zoning district. Do we have items for discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by John, second by Roz. All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Application is approved. Okay, item D, two thousand twenty, Z two thousand twenty one eight eight six was also continued. And then item E, Z two thousand twenty one eight eight seven was also continued. All right. New business. Item A, Z two thousand twenty one eight nine one of Sammy P, Inc., requesting a special permit for modification of approved earth products excavation and processing plans, Z two thousand nineteen one six seven zero, and Z two thousand twenty one seven zero one for construction of temporary bridge and haul road between adjacent excavations on property located on Millbrook Road, Plainfield map ten, block seventeen, lot five, industrial one zoning district. This does require a public hearing.
I'll make a motion to send to a public hearing.
I'll second it.
Motion by Roz, second by Sean to schedule for public hearing at our regularly scheduled meeting in November. All in favor, aye? Any opposed? All right, scheduled for public hearing. Item B, Z two thousand twenty one nine zero three of Deborah Allard requesting a special permit for single-family residents with attached-in-law apartment on property located on Canterbury Road, Plainfield map three, block fifty, lot thirty, RA sixty zoning district. This requires a public hearing.
I'll make a motion that it be scheduled at our next regularly scheduled meeting.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by John and a second by Sean. All in favor, aye? Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, scheduled to public hearing in November. Item C, Z two thousand twenty one nine zero four of Exeter Group requesting a site plan review for proposed two thousand two, two hundred, two thousand forty-four square foot warehouse with six hundred and sixty-four parking spaces, access drives, parking lot, utility connections, stormwater management system, site lighting, and landscaping on property located at one thirty-seven Lethrop Road, Plainfield, map eighteen, block thirteen, lots eleven and twelve, industrial one zoning district. And we were waiting for some more information. Is that right, Ryan?
It is going before the Wetlands Commission for a public hearing this month, so the commission cannot act on it at this meeting.
All right, so that'll be automatically continued to our next meeting then without vote?
Correct.
Okay, so that'll be continued. Item D. Sorry, too many papers. There it is. Item D, Z two thousand twenty one nine zero seven of Sanger Mono Properties LLC requesting plan development district approval to add wholesale business, building materials, storage, and sale, manufacturing of construction and building materials from earth, rock, ore, and minerals, manufacturer of products from recycled materials, truck terminal, earth excavation, processing, and removal on property located at twelve twenty-one and twelve forty-one Norwich Road, assessors map five, block four, lots forty-two and forty-two A, and this does require a public hearing.
Take a motion, move to public hearing next month.
I'll second.
Motion by Sean, second by John for public hearing. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Scheduled to public hearing. Z two thousand twenty one nine zero eight of K A and G Development LLC requesting a seven-lot subdivision on property located on Sterling Hill Road, assessors map twenty-three, block fifty-eight, lot eleven. Does this require a public hearing, Ryan?
It does not. However, the Wellness Commission does have to review it this month.
Okay, so that will be continued to next month as well.
Does this also have to go to Plant Conservation Development? I'm sorry, the Conservation Commission?
Mary Ann?
Yes, I did submit it to them, and they're gonna be looking at it Monday night at their meeting.
Okay, so do we need a motion to continue that, or is that an automatic continuance?
I'd feel better with a motion.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to continue.
Make a motion to continue till next month.
I'll second.
Motion by Sean, second by John. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, continue to next meeting. All right, review and act on the minutes from the September eighth, two thousand twenty meeting. Did anyone have any items for revision?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as. Never mind, I wasn't there.
So, John, he can't make that motion because he wasn't there unless he listened to the tape.
I, I did not. I watched the video, but I did not listen to the tape.
Well, if you watched the video, you'd be qualified to vote on the minutes.
I'll just abstain.
Okay, all right, to you, John.
In that case, I will make a motion to accept the meeting minutes as written.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jared. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And we have one abstention.
We have two. I wasn't there either.
All right, two abstentions. Meeting minutes pass. Three to nothing with two abstentions. Thank you. Correspondence, Mary Ann had forwarded all the months correspondence received for the record. Was there any comments or questions about correspondence?
I don't remember getting correspondence.
That was all an email, right, Mary Ann?
Yeah.
I didn't get that email. I was going to ask you to send that to me, please.
I will do that.
With the letters.
Okay, I don't believe there are any items under other.
That might have gone to her junk email, by the way. Mine keeps showing up in my junk files.
Yeah, mine went to junk as well.
Oh, really?
Yeah, check those clutter and spam. All right, item 11, report from zoning enforcement.
Okay, back to 681 Norwich Road, S and P Ventures. We approved a site plan for dump truck, trailer, parking, paving box, et cetera, behind the building over there. I thought the contractor had moved out. He did not, apparently. He just was out of town with his equipment. It is back. I have to send a notice of violation out to the property owner. They are parking the truck in front of the building on state property rather than behind the building where it was approved.
I have a question. Are the courts back yet?
They are now accepting new applications. They are not holding hearings yet. As far as I'm aware. So we are forwarding things on to them, but this is not, this is not going to the courts at this point.
No, I know. No, I just, was a question.
35 Spar Road, Jackson Residence for obsessive chickens. She has been whittling away with a number of chickens on the property. She's down to 91. She has probably another 10 or so to get rid of before she's in compliance. 3244 Norwich Roads, we don't see. This is the shed place at the old Jewish City Savings. There's a multitude of violations and the violations keep adding up. We now have apartments in there without any permits. This is kind of a joint operation between my office, the building inspector's office and the fire marshal's office. We are sending this out to the attorney to proceed to court for the site plan violations. So hopefully next month I'll be able to report more on that.
Weren't they approved for an apartment or two in there?
They were approved for one apartment on the south side of the, of the building over where the old Video Galaxy used to be on the right-hand side. However, they did not pull the zoning permit or permits from the building inspector. It is not up to code. There's no egress. Fire separation is not there. Lots of problems with building and fire.
What about the second floor above the bank? Wasn't there an apartment there or something too at some point? I thought we had viewed that.
I believe they eliminated that from the plan. So, but they do have a second apartment on the first floor where the old Jewish City Savings used to be, and that was not permitted. And again, a bunch of issues with building and fire as well as not, not compliance with the site plan. Would they like to share that information?
So Ryan, have they been issued a cease and desist as in they can no longer operate? Have their permits been like completely pulled?
They are under a notice of violation. The courts have to issue an injunction.
So has that been filed with the attorney?
Not yet. We're getting the packets together to send to the attorney.
So when do we expect that to go out?
I'm hoping to work on it this week and next, and it'll probably be a joint operation. All three offices will probably be sending everything to the attorney at the same time. Ready to move on?
Yes, please.
Okay. 6 Center Parkway, BH Trailers. They are still under construction over there. 39 Lily Bridge Road, Moran Residence, unregistered vehicles and parts. I did stop in there a couple of weeks back and spoke with the property owner, explained that if they do not complete the cleanup, that we would be issuing a notice of violation and proceed to court as necessary. So they said they will be working on that to finalize the cleanup.
Can I just go back to 6 Center Parkway?
Yep.
Because this has been pending for a while. So they're supposed to submit new plans because they have changed their, from their approved plan. So how many months do we let them go without a revised plan before there is a notice or a cease or?
The plans were revised. They're, they're constructing unrevised plans.
Okay, why are they still on this list that they're working off a revised plan?
Right, so shouldn't they be out of violation if they're following their plans now?
Yes, it's just an update. Since it was violation, just following their, the progress over there, but I can remove it.
Because if they're in compliance now, then it would be considered closed, right?
Right, as far as violation goes. I was just updating the position on the status.
All right, I think that's why I was confused. Okay. Thank you.
Yep. 211 Kate Downing Road, the Mackin Residence or Mackin Property, I should say. The, he has his construction equipment on the property, basically moved his business there. He's told me numerous times that he is moving it out. He's under, been under violation for most of a year now, and we'll be sending that off to the attorney as well in the coming weeks. So 16 Putnam Road Extension, Old Putnam Road Extension, Larry Tatro, two illegal apartments. Last update was that there is nobody residing in the apartments. However, he has not allowed us to enter the property to do inspections. So that will also be going to the attorney in the coming weeks. 13 Simmons Ave, Doug Grisco, notice of violation was issued on that. He had multiple, multiple unregistered motor vehicles and parts. He has so far, he moved seven vehicles. That's probably around half of what he had there. So he is making progress. We'll, we'll continue to update on that. To South Pine Street, the Belling Residence. Commercial trucks and fuel cell. I believe there are two fuel cells in the backyard for fuel storage. They have two commercial trucks in the driveway, one trailer dump and one triaxle, I'm pretty sure. So they have removed the fuel cells and they are working on relocating the dump trucks. So hopefully in the next few weeks we'll have that resolved.
Did you give them a deadline?
I gave them 30 days, which they are over. So pretty soon we'll be we'll be proceeding with that.
So was there a second deadline issued? And if they don't comply with that, that'll be the cutoff to give the notice of violation?
Yeah, I'll have to push the issue a little. Lynn Street, which is, Lynn Street is off of Graham Ave and Musup. There is a larger apartment complex over there. And Lynn Street was a town road back until the mid 70s. The town abandoned the road, but we kept ownership of the property. That is where the driveway and the parking is for the apartment complex. One of the residents of the apartment complex constructed a chicken coop and it had multiple chickens located on town property, which generated a complaint. And we posted a notice to have the chickens removed, and after a couple of weeks, they were. So that's, that's closed.
So Ryan, looking at the spreadsheet of violations, so I noticed the narrative was updated, but that some of the updates were not put on the spreadsheet. So are you not maintaining the spreadsheet?
Yeah, I am maintaining it.
Okay, so I think at our last meeting, we had talked about putting dates on the resolution items so that we could tell when the last actions were taken, and I don't see that that's been done.
Okay, I apologize for that.
Okay, and then I've got my materials maybe a couple hours before our meeting today. So is there a reason that these materials, including your comments on agenda items, can't be included with our agenda when it gets mailed out?
Well, things are constantly being updated. So if I send them out with the agendas, they will be incomplete. I'll have to do them again for, you know, for the meeting.
Wouldn't it make sense, though, to have your initials so that we have those ahead of time, and then you only make updates because the agendas are sent 10 days in advance of the meeting?
I can do that. However, a lot of times there is not a whole lot of information when the agendas are set out, sent out. But I can try to do that for you.
I think it would be better for the commission to have as much information as possible in advance of the meeting so that we have time to review, so that some of our questions might self-resolve by having all the information available to us.
Okay.
Do other commission members have an opinion on that?
Is there a deadline for them to submit paperwork to you? Application, not applications, but plans? I mean, you just received some, some prints today that we're supposed to be discussing tonight. Is there a deadline to stop that?
No, they can present them at the, at the meeting, but with Zoom, it's, it's difficult. So they can present them up until the end of the business day.
How do you get a chance to review them if they're presenting with the meeting?
If I don't have time to review them, then we review, review them at the meeting and possibly continue.
And we set a deadline?
I don't know if we can based on statutes. I'd have to look into that.
Statutorily, you can't cut off when, when they submit documentation for the commission.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we need time to review, review it.
Especially now because you're coming through with such, they're coming through with such big applications now. We got a huge one coming next month, the review for site plan. I mean, we really should have time to look at these things and not make jump decisions out of them.
John, did you have a comment? I think you're muted.
Some of these folks don't seem to have the bandwidth to come through clearly, either audio or visual, which makes it even more difficult and I think probably extended tonight's meeting by at least a good half an hour unnecessarily.
Agree. All right, any other comments on that?
We do have a comment for selection.
Oh, go ahead.
A question. Carla, would it be possible for you and I and, and our young gentleman here to sit, sit down and talk about that possibility of getting the documentation out to maybe a week prior, and then if the updates occur to be able to send that out?
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay, so why don't we talk about that offline?
All right, thank you. All right, report from Planning and Zoning Department.
Only additions I have, well, clarifications. Under my miscellaneous, the Eco Synergy, I let members know that their Phase Two as-built did not agree with what the commission approved as part of their special permit. The additional panels did not kick the wattage over into Siting Council jurisdiction, so it's still within the purview of the Planning and Zoning Commission. They do need to come in for a modification to their special permit so that that, oh, that excessive construction can be validated. We do not yet have an application.
But they are aware?
Yes, they are. I did, I did let them know last week. The Shepherd Hill Elementary School sidewalks, just to remind members, the public informational meeting and special town meeting on this project, the Community Connectivity Grant Program is scheduled for tomorrow night beginning at 6:45. And it is hoped that it will be well attended and the vote will be favorable to apply for the grant.
Now, that'll be on Zoom also, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, we've come to the end of the agenda. So if there's nothing further, I'll entertain the motion to adjourn.
Shall move.
Seconded.
Motion by Roz, second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good night.
Good night.